Welcome, everyone. This is the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for the City of Riviera Beach. Today is September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. The time is approximately six thirty P. M. If anyone wish to speak on an agenda item, please complete a public comment card and give it to the Planning and Zoning Staff prior to the Board Discussion and before the Public Comments Section is announced. In no event will anyone be allowed to submit a comment card to speak on an agenda item after the item has been read or considered. The total amount of time for each member of the public to comment on each item is three minutes. Let's start off with a moment of silence. And the Board will lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Brown?
Present.
Board Member Gallin?
Here.
Board Member Joseph?
Present.
Board Member Shepherd?
Here.
Chair Wiley?
Present.
You have a quorum chair.
All right, any acknowledgement of any Board Member absentee notification?
Yes, Chair. Vice Chair Fernandez did send written communication that he will not be attending tonight. And Board Member Rene Burgess also sent written correspondence saying that she will not be attending tonight.
Any acknowledgement of any Board Member vacant positions?
We have vacant positions. We have District Two alternate vacant. We have District Four alternate vacant. And we have District One Board Member vacant.
All right, on to number three. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. We'd like to add a new item for Board Updates related to some requests that have been made in previous meetings. Won't take very long, but we'd like to do it at the start of new business.
Got it, thank you. Any disclosure by Board Members? Right. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Chair has been properly moved and second. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Joseph?
Yes.
Board Member Gallin?
Yes.
Board Member Shepherd?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
Right on to number five. You're going to get approval of minutes.
At this, at this time, Chair, we have no minutes to prove at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask, when was the last time we received minutes? I can't remember the last time we received minutes because it looked like we're getting them sparingly.
No, the last time we received minute was our last Planning and Zoning Meeting. The last one that we had was Comp Plan. We didn't have minutes for Comp Plan. But our last Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, we did have minutes.
So that was when? What is it at, though, I guess? When was the last time we received those minutes? I can't, I can't remember.
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth? August fourteenth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. On to number six, unfinished business.
We have no unfinished business, Mr. Chair.
All right, on to new business.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update. We're working on, there was, the Board made three different requests. Two of them were some follow-up on some previous items that came before the Board, as well as a new initiative of some potential ideas that were put forth by Board Member Burgess. And we're proposing to bring those back in, to you to discuss in a workshop setting next month. The other request was made in our last meeting, which was the Board had questions about the procedures and process related to derelict or unwanted vehicles parked in the right-of-way. And so we've requested that Sergeant Brian DeSantis come and give you a brief overview, since the Police Department is over the regulation of those vehicles, and then be available for any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. With the new business, for seven A, since they're all pertaining to the same purpose, can seven A, seven B, seven C, and seven D be read in at the same time?
Mr. Chair, could we hear from Officer DeSantis?
Okay, yes, 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 okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I am Sergeant Brian DeSantis, and I have the pleasure of serving this illustrious city as the Sergeant over our Traffic Division with the Police Department. Thank you for welcoming me here this evening to discuss some questions in reference to vehicles on our right-of-ways within the City of Riviera Beach. Prior to the beginning of this meeting, you were handed, handed a document that I provided. This documentation does have a hyperlink at the top to MuniCodes. MuniCodes is a web-based program that lists all municipal ordinances for cities, towns, villages, and counties in the state of Florida. Below that, you have my contact information if, for any reason after this meeting, you feel the need to get in touch with me for any additional comments, questions, or concerns. But speaking about the topic with vehicles on our right-of-ways, as Mr. Evans said, we at the Police Department, in cooperation with code enforcement, we are tasked in the Traffic Unit to go ahead and investigate reports of derelict vehicles, inoperable vehicles, and properly parked vehicles, and so on and so forth, within the roadways and the sidewalks through the City of Riviera Beach. There are many reasons why, and many reasons how, many ways in how we can go ahead and remove vehicles, and those are outlined in some of the many ordinances that I provided here for you this evening. Most vehicles that we tend to remove off of our roadways are for one of two reasons. Either they appear to be inoperable, meaning they have been involved in a crash, flat tires, busted-out windows, things of that nature, where we have identifiable proof that this vehicle is not moving. There may be foliage that's growing up underneath the vehicle in and of itself, debris that we can clearly see that we just had a rainstorm, and none of that has been washed away because it gets caught by the tires of the vehicle. Mounds of sand or dirt growing and placed around the vehicle. These indicators give us a clear and concise thought process that these vehicles are inoperable and they're not being moved. Some of the things you'll see in the ordinances, we do have dedicated time periods. No vehicle may remain parked in the same position within the City of Riviera Beach in an excess of sixty hours. That in its, of itself, my, I, along with my team members, if we get a report that a vehicle has not moved, we utilize marking spray paint, and we may mark an area near a tire, observe, come back in twenty-four hours, and see if that vehicle has or has not moved. The reason why I say come back within twenty-four hours is because the allegations made, we can then sticker the vehicle for the possible violation of not being moved within sixty hours, and then we can come back later on and then remove that vehicle. Another reason why we go ahead in a form where we can remove vehicles from the roadway is our city ordinances mirror Florida State statutes. Non-moving violations such as not having insurance on vehicles or having expired registrations, these are non-moving violations in which the state of Florida allows us as law enforcement officers to issue violations for. Our city municipal ordinances allow us, in theory, since those vehicles have an expired registration or have no insurance on the vehicle on file, they are not, they're deemed not roadworthy, and we can go ahead and utilize that information as well to remove vehicles off of our right-of-way. Our city currently utilizes three separate tow truck companies that we are in contract with. We utilize Sheehan's Towing, Gardens Towing, and Koff's Towing to perform all of our vehicle recovery removal services. Are there any questions that I can answer from the Board?
Yes, we'll start, I'll start with Mrs. Shepherd, and we'll work our way down, because I'm pretty sure you have some questions.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Brown, Mr. Gallin?
No questions.
All right, I have a couple of questions. We always had the dilemma by, I'm living on Thirteenth Street in the Federal Gardens area, and we always had the issues with the trucks coming up and down the area. So one concern that I have in the mornings, very early morning, especially when the time change happens, is very, very dark when people leaving to go to work about six, seven o'clock. What's happening is that a lot of the vehicles by the Callaway Center area by Thirteenth Street, they're now parking in the middle of the street, because I guess the facilities that they have cannot maintain an eighteen-wheeler, right? Or they're doing, and just the other day, I had pictures of it, to where someone had parked in the middle of the road, putting little things on the side, and they were actually doing, making a shipment with some huge items into one of the facilities and everything, and it really caused a hazard because no one was there really to guide traffic. And people, of course, when the schools let out, there's a lot of traffic going back and forth there, and I was wondering, was that deemed legal?
So Florida State statutes and our municipal ordinances do allow for the loading and unloading. A vehicle, if a vehicle is in commerce, so for example, if we're talking about the industrial area, right along the eight hundred and nine hundred blocks of West Thirteenth Street, where we have all of those bays with all the automotive repair shops and so on and so forth, if a business is receiving a shipment, for example, and that truck that is parked within the median is in commerce, it is not unlawful because the, that vehicle is actually in commerce. It's there for a purposeful reason, whether it being a pickup or drop-off. Now, for this reason, vehicles are equipped with emergency flashers. Some vendors, some businesses will go ahead and provide their drivers or their employees with cones to go ahead and set out, like, for example Comcast, or Xfinity, or even FPNL, when they are in the act of actively working, you'll see them, one of the first things that they'll do is to go ahead and take their cone and place it in the front and/or the rear of their vehicle, indicating that they are actively working. If a vehicle is actively in commerce and it's dropping off or picking up materials, then yes, it is legal because technically it's still in commerce. Now, if that vehicle was stopped there, there's no, there's no driver, there's no employee, it's parked in the median, they're utilizing it as a staging area, that's where it now crosses that threshold of being unlawful.
Right.
Now, with situations like that, because West Thirteenth Street, let's face it, if you've been here in the city for more than five minutes and you drive anywhere along Thirteenth Street near President Barack Obama Highway, you know that trucks park in that median, and we have, when I was an officer in a traffic unit, we went to every single business there, and we said, you cannot have your vehicles staging here in the roadway.
Right.
One of the downsides to our response, not us as a city, as a police department, not having our own capability to remove a vehicle, meaning we don't have a tow truck, we don't have a tow truck driver that is specifically a city employee, we have to utilize those outside contractors. So as part of our agreement and part of our contract, we have a thirty-minute time response. From the time that our communication center contacts that tow truck company and requests their services, they have thirty minutes to get to us. So we could be sitting out there with the vehicle that we are going to tow for a violation, whether it be blocking the roadway, whatever that violation may be, and if the operator of that vehicle then comes, hops into their vehicle, and then drives off, we're on the hook for the service that we just requested from our tow truck company. On the flip side of that, we can then go ahead and issue a citation and/or issue some sort of violation to the operator of that vehicle, but we don't see that, we're, we don't see that income coming back to us as an agency. We're, we give the violation, but we're also out because we just called for one of our contractors to come on out, they've got to pay their driver, but now we're canceling them and we're still eating that. So it's, it becomes one of those kind of sticky situations. We prefer to try to go ahead and resolve it by saying, hey, get your vehicle off the roadway here right now. If we see it in the future, we're going to go ahead and remove it, but we still have that, we've got to kind of sort of be sneaky about it sometimes. We've got to go ahead and call for that wrecker kind of stage at another location, monitor from a distance, and as our wrecker arrives, we roll up and we get to it. But with these big rigs, the eighteen-wheelers, they require special vehicles. They require the heavy lift boom trucks, and those vehicles, those tow trucks are typically not out on the roadway on a daily basis. They typically require that a driver come in out of one of the smaller flatbeds or one of the smaller little pup trucks, park that truck, and then hop into the large boom truck, and then come from their yard. So sometimes with those big boom trucks, there's an increase in the response time to get those contractors out to us. We try to go ahead and keep the roadways clean. We try to go ahead and advise our businesses. We want to maintain those good and great partnerships that we have with our businesses. We don't want to take money out of people's pockets, but if we have to, we will go ahead and enforce what we can do.
Right. Agreed, because like I said, we don't want to deter businesses from coming here by threatening them that we're going to give them tickets with the, with the trucks, and we understand that situations do come up. It's just for a lot of safety reasons, because a couple of times coming down there is not heavily lit, and one of the drivers was coming around the back, the side of the truck. Of course, you can't see him, and by the time he got ready to walk out, you know, the car pulled right up, and you know, he could have been hit or whatever, so just trying to involve a little safety with the rules. Now, a lot of the neighborhood streets, I'm thinking Avenue O, I was going to Avenue R, there's a couple where I seen, when we go down those roads, we have cars parked on the side, so where it's a double-lane highway to where people are now curving around there because people are parking on the side of the road, in those main roads. Now, in, in one of the local roads where you may live at, where the houses are, I can kind of understand that, and I was wondering if we can have some kind of rule to where either we park on one side or the other, because what's going to happen when we have a fire truck come down, we have both cars on the side, we have the fire truck come down, and he's going to be tearing off mirrors from the vehicles because it's not enough space, because our roads are already pretty small. So I didn't know whether there was something that we could do about that to either have it on one side or the other side, so we have enough leeway, or in, on the main roads, would we be able to get those cars to be, be parked in the yard or parked somewhere else, so we can have those main roads for the cars?
So we, when you're looking at roadways like Avenue S, Avenue R, and any of those north and south roadways that are especially more frequently used roadways, when you look at the design of our roadways, and you look at the striping on our roadways, and you look at how our city is designed in and of itself, a vehicle can, a vehicle can park on that roadway, does it cause an inconvenience? Yes, it does. Statutorily, and according to our municipal ordinances, if there are not key elements in place, and if it is not written in our ordinances, then we as law enforcement officers cannot enforce that. There are several, when you go through this little packet, there are several things that identify an area, there are areas that are designated in our municipal codes as completely no parking areas. Some of the, one of the biggest ones that is identified in there, and I will speak about it, would be North Ocean Drive, just because of the simple fact of the, the way that, that roadway is constructed on the alternate A-one-A, it's actually in municipal ordinances that no vehicles are allowed to park on the sides of that roadway. But within our neighborhoods, one of the factors that we have to consider is that some of our, some of our neighborhoods have homeowners' associations. So if, I, I love the opposite side of the road parking theory. I've lived in communities where it's the, it's an odd month, it's January one, all cars will park on the odd-side-numbered houses during the odd month. February, it's an even number, all cars will park on the even side of the roadway. I love that, but unfortunately, we as law enforcement can't go ahead and enforce something like that. That would be something that would have to be brought to the council, their legal team, and drafted and put into municipal ordinances, made it an, make it an ordinance, where then it's enforceable by law enforcement. If it's a separate, for example, if we talk about like Woodbine, Woodbine, or Lone Pine Estates, or any of those separate private communities, and they have their own HOA, if they want to do that inside their community, that's on them, that's considered private. They can make that happen, but to, to have it in an open city, that would have to be done through the City Council, through the Legal Department for the city, and that would have to be enacted in ordinance for us to be able to enforce something like that. Does it cause an inconvenience on our smaller roadways, West Twenty-Sixth, West Twenty-Fourth, West Twenty-Eighth Street, where a vehicle, where vehicles are right across the side from each other? Absolutely. When myself and, and members of my team are patrolling our streets, if we observe a situation where that's like that, we get out of our cars, we go ahead and run the license plates, we try to see where these vehicles belong, we'll try to knock on a door and say, hey, listen, guys, you know, we understand your vehicle is legally parked, but do you mind moving it, shifting your car this way? Do you mind shifting your car this way? So this way, in the event we have an emergency, emergency vehicle and emergency services can travel through here safely. Our roadways, especially that run east and west, as you'll see, most of our streets don't have solid yellow lines that run between them, and that's so vehicles can technically move over and around, utilizing caution to traverse their ways from east to west. And the same for roadways going north and south. So it's not unlawful unless there are signs that are posted that prohibit parking, if the curb is painted yellow, if there are signs that are up, or if the vehicle in and of itself is parked in such a manner that it's on the sidewalk. Because then that opens up a whole nother realm of violations. If a vehicle's on a sidewalk, now you are hampering my pedestrian traffic, and this is something that I have to explain to our citizens all the time. They're like, well, I'm parking on the sidewalk, so this way cars can make it through. And I have to explain that, I understand you're trying to make it safe for our emergency responders, and they don't want to get their cars hit, but now you're causing our pedestrians that are trying to walk on the sidewalk to have to step out into the roadway to go around the vehicle and then get back on, put in that pedestrian in danger. So it's a slippery slope, but it's all clearly defined in our municipal ordinances. If it's not marked, if it's not signed, we can't enforce it for no parking unless there's a subsequent violation.
One more question now, I definitely appreciate you coming here to get this, because we just spoke about this last, last month, and to see your immediate responses is, is good, thank you.
You're welcome.
But one, one more thing, again, and I know this problem is personal to myself, and we had UPS to come in and actually pay for the roundabouts in the area of Federal Gardens, so the vehicles would be slow, and it basically was there to deter the bigger trucks from coming through. Now, I made a call to the State Department, and they referred me to the county. Then the County Department referred me to the city, and then when speaking to the city manager about it, they were stating that it was nothing they could really do about it, which was contradictory to what the state and what the county was saying. So my thing is that even, and I have a picture of this also, leaving to go to work, one of the big eighteen-wheelers got ready to come through by the roundabout, and he got stuck. So all the cars had to back up right there in front of City Hall while he tried to back maneuver, because if not, he would have ran right over the Federal Gardens sign and everything, and that was the whole point of that. So I was wondering, again, and maybe I can get an answer from you, why is it not possible to get a sign in that area to stop the eighteen-wheelers from coming through the residential area?
Okay, so if you look at your packets on the very first page, Chapter nineteen, Article number one in general, Section nineteen dash two, it's titled Powers and Duties of Chief of Police and Police Department to Regulate Traffic. Our Chief of Police, Chief Coleman, absolutely has powers as the Chief of Police. We went ahead and we identified that through numerous citizen complaints that UPS was departing their hub off of Avenue U, they were traveling southbound to West Thirteenth Street, and then they were making that right-hand turn, and they were traveling west on West Thirteenth Street, right through Federal Gardens, approaching not one, but two roundabouts before they arrive at Avenue U. Our Chief of Police met with the staff over at UPS, and subsequently, due to a lot of back and forward, and this happened just about a year or so ago, it caused UPS, based on the chief's power, saying, listen, these vehicles cannot go through this residential community because it is a safety hazard. It caused UPS to have to hire the Florida Highway Patrol. And the Florida Highway Patrol is hired by UPS, and those troopers that come out on that detail are supposed to be there directing the vehicular traffic, all of these commercial vehicles, away from Federal Gardens to designated routes that were agreed upon by our Chief of Police and the administration over at the UPS hub within our city. Now, unfortunately, there's a lot more of their trucks than there are of our personnel, and these troopers are state employees as opposed to us being a municipal employee. Are we law enforcement officers? Absolutely. I can't go tell a trooper what to do, because technically, they're a state, they're a state agent, they're an agent of the state, and I'm an agent of this city. We try to address vehicles. If I myself, a lot of that happens during our school zones. I'd rather be out protecting our kids in our school zones than trying to manage all these commercial vehicles that are unfortunately violating the sign that's clearly posted there at Avenue R and West Thirteenth Street that has a weight restriction. There is a weight restriction sign there indicating what kind of vehicles cannot enter into Federal Gardens. If I'm available, or a member of my team is available, we try to get in there, and we try to cite those drivers, because they're professional drivers, they're operating with a CDL. Those licenses are not easy to get, and they cannot dispute a moving violation when we issue them their citation. So we absolutely do have a power. The chief has voiced his power, he has utilized his power, but we unfortunately can't get every single violation that gets through there, because as everybody knows, the City of Riviera Beach is a very large commercial city, and there are tractor-trailers traveling everywhere through our streets, and we are doing the best that we can do to maintain our safe roads and our safe sidewalks for our pedestrians, for our citizens, for our visitors. Every now and then it happens, there's going to be a violation, we just can't get them officer.
I appreciate, thanks for clarification, because a lot of people actually want to know why, and what we could do about the situation with the vehicles. UPS doesn't seem to be a problem anymore, because they have to make deliveries in that neighborhood. That's fine, but the eighteen-wheelers are the ones, and just so everyone understands the clarification of why the complaints are coming from Federal Gardens is because those eighteen-wheelers with the weight that they have with the, with the, the speed bumps, and once they come across the speed bumps, they vibrate the ground, and you can feel this shaking to your house.
Oh, absolutely.
And it, it's the foundation of your house now shaking, and now you can see cracks in where the bricks are because the houses are shaking, so it's, it's, it's our personal property that we are actually complaining about. We're just not complaining about something trivial, we just, we want to make sure we have a, a home to come home to and not the side of the house falling to the side or something like that. So again, I appreciate your explanation, that's one thing we really wanted to know, and I know- And, um, I know, thanks to Ms. Cheryl Lanier, uh, councilwoman, um, came through and. We kind of put this thing together to try to get that done with the, the, um, traffic warming, traffic calming, um, turnabouts. And everything, but if we can just get a little more, just to keep them out, especially when. Even though we don't see it a lot anymore, because back in my days, kids was always running back and forth across the street and everything like that. And we would hate to have those vehicles come down, especially trying to make those turns. And then if you see where the turnabout is, it's car marks, all in truck marks. I mean, just right over it because they're trying to maneuver their way around it, but that's the whole point of having that there, so they're not supposed to be there.
Unfortunately, sir, that's why they're called traffic calming devices. Um, we, we, there, there, there's always a caveat to a situation. As I was speaking earlier, the eight hundred block, nine hundred block of West Thirteenth Street, if a vehicle's in commerce, the vehicle's in commerce. We might have one of the larger UPS trucks that has to stop on Thirteenth Street in the fifteen hundred block to do a delivery. We, it may be a FedEx truck. Unfortunately, some, somebody might order something that's coming in on a tractor trailer. We have to treat each and every single truck that goes through there when we're in that area. As its own separate investigation, we want to make sure that we're just not viol, blanket violating everybody's.
Right.
Path of travel. So each individual stop may be different, maybe significant, they may have a valid reason, they may not have a valid reason, but that's the purpose of a traffic stop. We believe we might see an infraction, we make contact, we get their side of the story. Ultimately, if we find out that an infraction did occur, we can either issue a citation or utilize officer discretion and issue a warning. Any type of enforcement that we conduct is all documented in our CAD system. We give drivers license numbers and or license plates to those vehicles to record the fact that we've made contact with these individuals. Those traffic calming devices, they are great to slow down traffic, but does it completely solve the problem? Absolutely not. I say, and it's funny getting, being a traffic sergeant, everything that we do in life is a two-way roadway. It takes not just one party, but it takes all parties to go ahead, that are involved, to go ahead and. Make that device work and be successful in the reason why it's there. Unfortunately, if people who are unfamiliar with the area are speeding through the area, they're going to hit that, that traffic calming device. In the community in which I live, we've added flashing signs, we've added mini rumble strips upon approach. And we've gotten to the point that we've illuminated the yield sign at a large traffic circle. I would say it's probably three times the size of the traffic circles that are on West Thirteenth Street. And just two weekends ago, vehicle versus the center of the traffic circle. I live in a fairly young community and it's probably been struck about eight different times over the last three years. It happens, we can't prevent everything, it's there to slow vehicles down, I think it does the job, it's just not a hundred percent answer, sir. We have to get the message out there, we have to speak to our community partners, we have to speak to our community businesses, and we need to talk to our citizens. You know, we, I think we tend to push blame and push focus on our, on big business. But we also have to remember that we within the city also violate on occasion. And we got to remind our own citizens, hey, let's slow down as well, it's a two-way street.
Right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, there is any, any more questions by the board or by myself?
Just, just one, Mr. Chair, um, planning and zoning and this, how does this tie in? Are we voting on something or? Why didn't they just go to city council, why, why are we listening?
No, we asked about the last, the last meeting that we requested that someone come in to give us information about some of the parking violations that were being. Done in the city of River Beach, so we requested that and that's why I said they worked on it pretty fast, because they got it right here at the next meeting.
Okay, I know the explanation, I just, I just didn't tie it in too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very welcome, thank you for having me this evening.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's, let it go on the agenda, agenda for city council, because I think it was so in-depth. It, it has to be, I think, re-vocalized again, so the, the res, because this is good, I just.
Absolutely.
I just didn't tie it in to what, what I did forget. But I think it should go before council, city council, so the residents can have opportunities to weigh in. I mean, this is a wealth of, uh, information and I think, I mean, I, I can't get through it, because I, this is the first time reading it. Uh, but it should go on their agenda, just because it was, it was a lot.
And it'd be nice to have something like this printed to put on the website also.
Absolutely.
So at least to be able to pull it up and be a look at it, because like I said, we get, um, people knocking on our doors all the time, asking about certain rules and regulations.
People should know about this, this is very important, very important. And I'm just sorry it came before planning and zoning, I think it should have went to the city first. And then if he wanted to come here, but I forgot you all had asked for this separation. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, um, so now I guess we can go on to new business now? Okay, so again, as I spoke of earlier, since seven A, seven B, seven C and seven D are combined, can we read those all into, uh, one time?
Yes, Sir Chair.
Yes.
Seven A, in ordinance of the city council of the city of River Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending the city code of ordinance, chapter thirty-one. LU twenty-five zero 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 one, on behalf of Marina Annex Housing LLC applicant. Approving a land use amendment application to change the land use from community facility CF to downtown mixed use. DMU A plus minus three point six two acre site generally located at. Two five one West Eleventh Street, parcel control number fifty-six forty-three forty-two thirty-three zero six zero three zero. Zero zero two zero, providing for. Acquability, conflict, servability, codification, and providing for an effective date for other purposes. Seven B, in ordinance of the city council of the city of River Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida. Amending the city code of ordinance, chapter thirty-one LU twenty-five zero 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 one. On behalf of Marina Annex Housing LLC applicant approving a land use amendment. Application to change the land use from community facility CF to downtown mixed use DMU. A plus minus three point six two acre site generally located at. Two five one West Eleventh Street, parcel control number fifty-six forty-three forty-two thirty-three. Zero six zero three zero 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 two zero, providing for acability, conflict, servability, codification, providing for an effective date. And for other purposes. Seven C, in the ordinance of the city council of the city of River.
Excuse me, for a moment, it looks like we got a re, a re, a repeat here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, because as, as Ms. Weathers read, the first one was for land use change. The second one says land use change, but that's an error, that's, that's repeated. Uh, and then the third on item seven C is a re, a repetition. So actually, well, if I may, if I may quickly, uh, sir, if you don't, if you don't mind, Ms. Ms. Weathers. Ms. Weathers accurately read the first part. The second part is, um, is an ordinance, amending the city code of ordinance, chapter thirty-one. Z A twenty-five dash triple zero two, on behalf of Marina Annex Housing LLC applicant. Approving a rezoning amendment application to change the zoning classification. From community facility CF to downtown core DC for plus or minus three six two acre site. The next one, I'm going through this rather quickly as a summary. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of River Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida. Amending the city code of ordinance, chapter thirty-one Z A twenty-five dash triple zero five. On behalf of Marina Annex Housing, as the applicant approving a tax amendment application. To the downtown core zoning designation to remove the building step back requirement for developments west of Avenue E. To provide for workforce housing, which is what this project is. And then lastly, number four is a resolution of the city council of the city of River Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida. Approving a site plan request, SP twenty-five triple zero eight. On behalf of the Marina Annex Housing LLC applicant for the development of a one hundred and seventy-five unit residential apartment building. With a fifteen thousand square foot community center to be operated by the Alpha Phi Alpha Education, uh, Foundation. And on a, and approximately six thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space. Within the, uh, within this, uh, one hundred and seventy-five unit building. On plus or minus three point six two acre site. The total site is plus or minus one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven point two square feet. Generally located at two fifty-one West Eleventh Street, providing for conditions of approval, providing for applicability. Conflict, separability and codification, and providing for an effective date and other purposes. So that is the, that, that is the application. And it's, the application broken down in those four different aspects, board members, but it's all for this one project. Okay, if I, and if I may, uh, I want to thank Ms., uh, Ms. Weathers, uh, for always working with me and helping me out. But, um, I want to be able to go ahead and now make the presentation.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
For the.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, if I may clarify.
Yes.
Uh, first of all, apologies for the error on the printed agenda. The first header that was read into the record is correct, uh, items B and C are not correct. Uh, so if it's okay with the board, what we'll do is move forward with the presentation that encompasses all of the applications. At the time for the vote, we'll make sure we read the header correctly into the record before you take your vote. All of the headers in your staff report are correct for each item, there are four application components to this, as you see, four items under new business in the agenda. However, B and C are erroneous duplicates, and when we get to the vote for those, we'll be sure to read the correct header. If that pleases the board. All right, correct, thank you, thank you.
Again, I, we, I apologize for behalf of the staff, Mr. Chairman, but it was this something that I saw and I just wanted to clear it up for the board. Okay, so for the record, I'm Kurt Thompson, a principal planner, uh, for the Development Services Department. And I'll be presenting this application. This, uh, as you can see on the overhead, there are four parts to this application as I read. I'll, I'll read, I'll go over each part in, in brief here. The first part is a land use designation change from, uh, community facilities to downtown mixed use. The second part is a zoning designation change from community facilities to downtown core. The third is a tax amendment, excuse me, uh, to remove the building step back requirement for developments west of Avenue E. Within the downtown core to provide for workforce housing. And lastly, is a major site plan approval for the development of a hundred and seventy-five residential units. And the community center on approximately plus minus, uh, three point six two acres. The red dot indicates the project location of the subject property. Uh, the site contains a private school, uh, K through A with a hundred and sixteen students. Uh, the site is currently zone, see, uh, community facilities or CF, uh, and has a future land use of community facilities. Uh, the applicant, the Marina Annex Housing LLC is seeking a land use change to downtown mixed use and a zoning change to downtown, uh, general. The applicant is also seeking a zoning tax amendment to allow for six stories on the site. To maximize the density on the site and to support the development of workforce housing. I have an illustration that better illustrates this for you. This is the.
Mr. Thompson, can you just pull your mic up just a little bit? Your mic, can you pull it up just a little bit?
Microphone closer.
Yes, please, I can barely hear you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, how, is that better, Ms. Sheriff?
Great, thank you, much better.
Okay, you, you, you stop me anytime, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the existing private school is, has proposed by the, uh, slide here, is to demolish the existing school and make way for the hundred and seventy-five unit. Uh, dwelling, dwelling unit multifamily use, sixty-five hundred square feet of retail. And fifteen thousand square feet of a community, community center. The community center is here, this is the built, the, uh, hundred and seventy-five unit structure. There's a swimming pool here with associated parking. This is the existing boys and girls club, which is not a part of this application. Uh, and then you have trash area, you have some amenities, and then this is the retail, uh, area here. The, what you have here before you now is the current zoning map, which is, oops. Which is here, this is the current zoning map, and then the second illustration is the current land use map. And as I said here, and it's written here, the land use designation is to change from CF to, uh, community facilities to downtown mixed use, which is down. Which is DMU. The second part is a zoning designation change from community facilities to, I'm sorry, to downtown core. The other, that was an error there, is downtown core, not downtown general, the rezoning to downtown core, downtown core. As you see here on this slide, has a requirement of the downtown zoning regulations. The project requires any portion of the building higher than four stories to be set back or stepped back an additional ten feet. So. I have, so as you can see here, this is the first four stories, which will be right, you know, from the setback. But then any additional floors will have to be stepped back an additional ten feet. What the applicant is, is asking for is that these additional requirements shall not apply. For buildings developed on sites that are located more than five hundred line, lineal feet west of the center line of, of Broadway or US one. Uh, or west of Avenue E, okay? The applicant is here and have staff and they have, uh, legal representation, uh, by Ms. Hope Calhoun, who, you know, staff work with. To work on this wording, and so they'll be able to, um, give you the background as to why they wanted to go this route. The request from the applicant, as I said, is to construct a mixed use workforce housing development project consisting of a hundred and seventy-five units. Plus or minus sixty-five hundred square feet of commercial space and a plus or minus fifteen hundred square foot community center. On approximately three point six two acre site. Uh, right now, the current site has a K through A, uh, private school, I think that school is, that building is now vacant, but. If, as I, uh, had said, uh, you have the parcel ID number, which is stated there that Ms. Weathers had indicated to you. Uh, the last side is this three point six two acres, this is zoning from community facilities to downtown core, okay? Community facilities to downtown core is the request. And then the land use change from community facilities to, um, mixed use. This is a rendering of the subject property, just to give the board some idea. This is West Twelfth Street, this will be, uh, West Park Drive. I have two, some additional, let me continue on here for a moment. The staff request that the planning and zoning board recommend approval of the proposed land use change from community facilities to downtown mixed use. Second, that the zoning change from community facilities to downtown core. Third, that the zoning code text amendment to remove the building step back requirement for developments west of Avenue E to provide for workforce housing. So I want to repeat that, so this is a zoning text amendment that involves only to remove the step back requirement for buildings. West of Avenue E for, to provide for work for, workforce housing, that's west of Avenue E, okay? If I. So that would be. Yeah, so here's the project, Avenue E, I think is here, and it would be west. Avenue E, I think, is here, and it would be west. Okay, there we go. It would be west of Avenue E, which is here. Okay? It would not affect any of the other buildings along Broadway. Okay? This 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 request would stay intact. That request would stay intact here for buildings east of Avenue E. This only applies to west of Avenue E. Okay? And then the site plan approval is for the development of one hundred and seventy-five resident residential units, a mixed-use project with a community center on approximately three point six two acres with sixty-five hundred square feet of commercial space. The community center is going to be operated by the. It will be operated by, I had it here, the. Thank you. The Alpha Education Foundation. There is some, and I noticed we needed to show you some additional renderings so you have some idea what this is going to look like. I have some renderings. Here are some of the renderings that I wanted just to show the board. This would be West Twelve and then West Park. This is the front of the subject building. Again, this is the subject building looking straight on from looking southward. This is the back of the, at the rear of the building, showing a swimming pool here. This would show the swimming pool and the parking area. Again, another rendering of the building. Same thing here, West Twelve, West Park Drive. This is the back end, as I said, the pool and a parking area. This is the Alpha Air Community Center that I was, that Mr. Booty here had indicated. Here is the location. This is the location of the community center. This is the floor plan, just to give the board some idea. This is looking at the the south elevation of the subject building. This is looking at the north elevation and looking straight on at the building. I think the board has an idea of these, the community center building is going to be approximately forty-two feet and forty-two feet eight inches in height from ground to the very top of the parapet and the, again, additional photos of the building. And the subject apartment unit building is going to be seventy-seven feet four inches plus or minus in height. So having made the presentation of these four points, staff is recommending that the board recommend the council to approve subject project. I think Mr. Jerel Harris is here to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant. As I've asked before, asked that the board hold off on your questions until after the applicant has made their presentation, and then, of course, we'll be ready and more than happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, to the board, to staff. My name is Jerel Harris, and I am managing the entitlement process for the Marina Annex Apartments. I am extremely excited to be before you this evening. Not only do I think that this is a fantastic development, this is also sort of a homecoming for me. Many, many years ago, I had the privilege to work for the City of Riviera Beach, and so I have a very deep love and affection for the city, and so I'm excited to be able to present this project to you all this evening. But before I get started, I want to bring up Mr. John Hurt. He is the, as you know, the executive director for the Riviera Beach Housing Authority, and he has been a strong champion for this development. He really understands the importance of having workforce housing in the city and having a place for families of all types and all sizes to call home. So, Mr. Hurt, it'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Good evening, Chair, board members, staff. I'm John Hurt, the executive director of Riviera Beach Housing Authority. I just wanted to have the opportunity to say to you that we're excited to bring this project forward to you. This is a fine example of public-private partnership. This is a situation where the housing authority has found a private sector partner to join with us to take this surplus property that the city has, that we worked with the City of Riviera Beach, to turn into an opportunity to provide one hundred and seventy-five units of workforce housing for the community. In addition to that, as you'll see, we're going to add the retail space, but even more, this team partnered with the Phi Alpha Educational Foundation to provide more community benefits. They're at the site now, but we're in this project going to enhance their ability to provide more services to the community by providing them a Alpha Educational Center, as you'll see. So we're really excited to bring this to you. This is one of our many projects that we have in the shoot. The way we can effectively work as a housing authority is to partner with others interested in bringing affordable housing to this community. So we constantly try to develop these private public partnerships, P3, as they often are called, and this is one of our first projects we'll bring to you like this. This is similar to what we did at Heron Estates, but it's even a larger and more diverse property. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. As you mentioned, this is a public-private partnership, so the housing authority is partnering with O'Connor Capital and Urban Farmers as the developer on this development. We also assemble a very robust professional team to help bring this project to life. Our architects on the project, our Architecture Farm and Architecture Design Collaborative, and we have them here tonight. Calvin Giordano and Associates is managing our engineering. WGI are our landscape architects. Ms. Hope Calhoun, who goes without introduction, is our legal counsel. Then we have Cam Consulting on engineering as well, and New Core Construction as our building partners. And so just a brief overview of the site, I know Mr. Thompson showed it to you a little bit earlier, but we are located between Thirteenth Street to the north here, West Eleven to the south, West Park Drive to the west, and then this is the right of way to the east. And so you all have seen the site, the history of the site. Palm Beach County, many, many years ago, transferred this property to the city with the hopes of there being a school built on the site, a permanent school structure. Over the years, there have been some attempts at doing that. Years ago, Maritime Academy was there, and then most recently, the Alpha Educational Foundation has been operating their programming on this site. The city council, a while ago, transferred ownership of this property to the housing authority because they realized that the school was not going there, and there was a much better use for this property to bring much-needed workforce housing to the city. And so we work with the city, we work with local neighborhood groups and residents to really design a project that we believe takes full advantage of the site. So as you can see, now, Mr. Thompson told me not to push something, and I pushed it, so let me see if I can go back. Okay, there we are. So as you can see, this is West Thirteenth here, just a different view. This is the existing Boys and Girls Club here. So we have a large amount of vacant land on the site, and then all of these temporary structures will be taken down. We also are proposing some significant improvements on West Park Drive. If you've driven West Park Drive, you know it is barely built out as a street, and so it needs some significant upgrades to it. We also are going to be proposing some parallel parking, some, sorry, some parallel parking here on West Eleven. And so as we go through the site, just want to make sure we, everyone sees the site and then the things that we plan to improve it. We also are very excited that there is so much activity happening on South Broadway. You all know that just recently, where's my pointer? There it is. So this is our development, proposed development here, just to the east of us, Villa La Onze. They actually broke ground, as you know, last week, and so these townhouses are currently under development. A few, I think last month, you all saw the Sobal condos come before you, and so they're building, I believe, five hundred and eight units of condos here, and then just across the street, the residence at Marina Village. And so this is really bringing a lot of activity, a lot of residences to this South Broadway corridor, and we're very excited to be a part of it. We all have focused on walkability, on really making sure that these things will connect very seamlessly to the Marina District, and so we're super excited to join the the other developments that are soon to come to this area. As Mr. Thompson stated, there are four things that we're asking you for tonight. The land use is currently community facility. It was intended to be a school, which is why it has that community facility designation. In order for us to build the housing that we need to build, we need to change the land use, and the land use that is adjacent to it is downtown mixed use, and so that is the comparable land use that is in the area. We are also looking to change the zoning. The zoning is also currently community facility, and so we are requesting the zone to be changed to downtown core. Currently downtown core is primarily along the Broadway corridor. It was intended for more intense development, more density. Because our site is nearly four acres, it makes sense for us to pursue the downtown core, which allows us to get to six stories, to be able to build the one hundred and seventy-five units of workforce housing that we're seeking. As a part of that, we're also requesting that the building's step back requirement be be removed from this property. You really have the step back in the code because along Broadway, if you allow buildings to be six stories up to eight stories, which is what the downtown core allows, you want to have some openings in those buildings along your major corridor so that it makes it feel less like a wall of buildings going up and down Broadway, right? So if you step the buildings back on your main corridor, it makes it feel a bit more open. Because we're not on Broadway, and we are significantly west of Broadway, having that step back requirement doesn't really work for the aesthetic of an apartment building in a neighborhood. And it also would have reduced the number of workforce housing units that we could have accommodated on the site. And so we're requesting for that step back to the building, that kind of stair step, to be eliminated from properties west of Avenue E. And then finally, to bring it all together, we're requesting the site plan approval, and we're asking for one hundred and seventy-five residential units, sixty-five hundred square feet of commercial space, and then the fifteen thousand square foot Alpha Community Center. And we're going to show a bit more detail about that as well. As you all know, there are a number of things that you have to consider when you're looking at making these recommendations for approval, and we've satisfied all of the eight conditions in the code to make sure that we are in compliance. We're consistent with all the elements of the comprehensive plan. There are change conditions which exist, so that South Broadway corridor, there are a number of new developments that are coming, so the conditions along Broadway that South corridor have changed. We are in conformance with all of the portions of the city development code. We have worked extensively with your staff, and I just want to give them a shout out. They have been extremely supportive, extremely helpful, and there's actually, we're going to talk about the civic open space. It was staff's recommendation that we make some changes to it, and those changes, I believe, make the development even better. And so your staff was very dedicated and focused to make sure we had the best development possible, so just want to give them a shout out, kudos for that. We have to consider whether anything is inconsistent. We're not inconsistent with the proposed land use. The land use to our east and west is also downtown mixed use. We are in compliance with all the capacity requirements. We we are going to maintain all of our water on our site, so we will not be putting water back into the city's system, and then there are adequate infrastructure for all the other things that we're seeking. We do not cause any adverse impacts. There are no environmental considerations. We're putting in more native plant species, so we are adding to the natural environment. Our development will not adversely impact property values. As you all know, bringing in new construction will help to raise property values in the adjacent areas. And then is in an orderly development pattern. So as you've seen, there's new development coming, and our development is in in order with the things that are coming along that South Broadway corridor. Just want to briefly touch on what some of the community benefits will be. So as we spoke about, there'll be a new community center, fifteen thousand square feet. The Alpha Educational Foundation will move their operations into that building. There'll be spaces there for other nonprofits to have office space in the building, and community members can also utilize the space in the building. I'm going to go over the floor plan shortly so you can see all the spaces that will be available in that building as well. We talked about the commercial space that align West Thirteenth Street, and so we're intentionally focused on finding local vendors, local retailers, local businesses that want to expand to come into that commercial space, and we're going to offer them a discounted rate to make sure that their businesses can thrive in that location. We are working very diligently to find local vendors to work on the project. We have a strong commitment to minority-owned businesses and small businesses. We're very intentional about making sure that they are participating in this, and to that extent, we expect this construction project to create two hundred and fifty construction jobs, and then once everything is done, we expect there to be at least thirty full-time jobs between the apartment complex and the community center. As you all know, we're required to pay impact fees, and we've estimated that our total impact fees that we'll pay to the city come up to about one point two million dollars, and so we are adding to the availability of funds so that the city can use those dollars to make other improvements across the city. So here's the site plan. So again, to the north is West Thirteenth Street, to the south is West Eleven, and to the west is West Park Drive. And so the building is kind of like an upside-down J, and so it wraps around West Thirteenth Street. All of our retail, commercial spaces are on Thirteenth. Again, this is where you'll get the most visibility from cars going by. The sidewalk here connects all the way down, so folks want to walk over and patronize those local businesses, it makes it really easy to do that by being along West Thirteenth Street. On the ground floor, this is our pool area here. It's a very well landscaped pool area with a lounge, then there's also kind of a restroom, locker room area for those who are going to be using the pool facility here. And then the building wraps all the way down, West Park Drive. This is one of the entrances and exits to the parking garage, I'm sorry, to the parking, the surface parking that is available here. And so if people are, residents are leaving, they can make a right and go up West Park, they can make a left and go down West Park. The other entrance to the site is here on West Eleven, and so as vehicles can come in here, or if they're exiting, they can make that right or that left. One of the things that we are really, I'm excited about are the improvements along West Park and along West Eleven. So we're proposing parallel parking here on West Eleven. Hopefully that shows up pretty well. And then on West Park, which is currently underbuilt now, we're putting in new, proposing new six-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street, so on the west side of the street and on the east side of the street, as well as new parallel parking on the west side of West Park. The interior to the site, the Alpha Community Center is just south of the Boys and Girls Club. We located it here very intentionally to really have that cohesion and that connection between what's currently happening at the Boys and Girls Club and then the youth activities that'll be happening here at the community center, and there is a connected walkway right here, so the kids that are here can easily get to the Boys and Girls Club and vice versa. And then just to the south, this is our civic open space, and we'll detail this out with some improved pictures in just a minute. And so. And so total, we have a six-story building. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy-five units, a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. It was very important that we have a variety of, of unit sizes because we want to have a variety of family types who can live in this building. And so it can be a, a single, it can be couples, it can be a family with small, with small children. They're all welcome and, and this is a building that can accommodate all of those different family sizes and family types. We have two hundred and eighteen parking spaces, all surface level, and nine, uh, eighty-eight, uh, handicap accessible spaces here. And then our civic open space again is here, which I'll show a little bit more detail of. Uh, we had extensive and lush landscaping around the entire site and interior to the site. We're bringing in a number of native trees and plants and shrubs. Uh, we actually are exceeding, um, our requirements around landscaping. And just to detail out some of those, uh, requirements. So our total impervious area, which is the hardscape area, um, we can go up to eighty percent, but we only go up to seventy-six percent. And then our landscape, we needed at least twenty percent, but we're providing twenty-four percent of the area's landscape. For the civic open space, we were required to do about seventy-nine hundred square feet, but we're at almost nine thousand. So we have about a thousand square feet more, uh, than the minimum requirement. Um, the floor area ratio, we could have gone up to two point O from a density standpoint, but we're only at one point three six five. Uh, we needed a hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces, we're providing two hundred and eighteen. Uh, we needed sixty-one bicycle parking spaces. We have sixty-five spaces and some of those spaces are in a bicycle storage area inside of the building as well. And then the maximum height is six stories and we are matching that six-story max height. Now to talk a little bit about the community center that will be operated by the Alpha Educational Foundation. Uh, and so this again is just the view of it looking from West 11th Street. So inside of the community center, you will have a full commercial kitchen and a very large multipurpose room. This room can be divided up, it can be an open space, you can have community meetings here, uh, baby showers here, birthday parties here, a host of events can happen, uh, in this multipurpose space. And there are restroom facilities just adjacent to it. And again, the kitchen area is here, so if you need to have food for your event, uh, it makes it easy to do that. And then the, the second and third floors, uh, we have a number of classroom spaces, office spaces and conference spaces, conference room spaces. So if you wanted to have a different type of activity or event, you just want to have a meeting or some other smaller, uh, gathering, you have plenty of space to do that on floors two and three. And they're also looking for local nonprofits who want to have office space in the building. They have the potential to have office space in the building as well. Then here are just a few more renderings of the site. Uh, you saw some of these in Mr. Thompson's presentation. And so again, uh, you know, we had, as a nod to the, the alphas, had to get that A in that black and old gold in there as well. And now let's talk about the actual, uh, residential building itself. So this is a view, uh, from West 13th. And so as you can see, there is the commercial space along West 13th. Um, we did a lot of landscaping, uh, along the front of this building as well. And then there is a, a kind of open patio area. We anticipate there being maybe a cafe, maybe a bakery, maybe something where people kind of want to come and sit. And so there's a bit of an overhang here, so if they want to sit outside, that becomes a, an option for folks who want to use that space. And then along West Park, uh, there's a new, again, six-foot sidewalk here. And then across the street, there's a six-foot sidewalk along with the parallel parking. This is the view looking, again, we're on West 13th, looking directly at the building. Uh, and so as you can see, the commercial space is here, uh, which is the most visible part, uh, of the building with cars going by. So they can see the activity in the retail space because we want to make sure those businesses are as successful as they can be. This is the view from, I'm on West Park Drive, looking at the building. Um, this is a podium building along this side. And so you would drive in, there is some covered parking along here. But we screened it, we landscaped it so it'll look really nice. Um, there is parking under the building here. And then you just drive through to the rest of the, the surface parking. Uh, this is the view looking, we're standing at the, kind of the southeast corner, looking into the building. So you have the Alpha Educational Building here, the civic open space is just to your east. And then this is the surface parking to the building, your, uh, pool area will be here. And here's the civic open space. So originally, we actually had parking in this location. And your staff came to us and said, hey, we don't think that's the best use for that space. What if you expanded your civic open space, really make it nice, um, and move your parking maybe to West, uh, 11th Street? So we went back to a drawing board and said, we really think we can make that happen. And so what we ended up with was a really nice, wide civic open space, uh, with a nice curved sidewalk that connects to the Alpha Ed Center. And then the sidewalk continues on through. We're able to make a bigger playground area, uh, so that kids and families could really enjoy that space. Uh, we got kind of creative with some of the seating options. And so we have like some curved bench seating, um, some other covered seating here. Uh, so we're really excited about how this civic open space really came together. And that was really through a collaborative effort, uh, with your team. And so it has really helped to bring this whole development together. Uh, so overall, we, we're very excited about the project. Uh, it's been a, um, a great time working to get this to this point. Um, and we, uh, really hope that, you know, you all recommend approval and that this project can continue to move forward. Uh, that concludes my presentation and we are, I have the whole team here. Uh, and so we're open and available for questions, uh, from, from the board.
Thank you, sir. Um, does the board, let's go down the board, I guess. Um, well, first of all, let's start off, do we have any, um, cards?
No, sir, Chair.
Um, on the board, do we have anyone who wants to speak? I'm going to start off on Mrs. Shepherd's side again. Do you have any questions or you want to come back?
Why don't you make me last because I've seen the drawing many times and been in meetings. So I'll let you all ask the questions, um, because I know I can answer most of them, but let me be last.
Got it. All right, Mr. Brown?
Uh, I guess I have one question. As someone who is not, who's uncomfortable with heights, are there any special safety provisions for when you get over, say, the third floor?
Uh, the question is, are there any safety provisions for the?
Residents or the owners when you get up above the third floor?
So there are balconies for, sorry, there are balconies on each of the, uh, units. And they have railings and they meet all of the, um, the safety codes and requirements. So all of the railings and the balconies do meet all of the code requirements.
And then we also review it during the building permit process if this project is approved right through.
Thank you.
Say that again, Mr. Thompson, I haven't quite yet. What did you just say?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. During the building permit review process, we, the project, this project will be reviewed for compliance with building regulations as well as all zoning regulations, water and sewer, uh, et cetera. So it'll go through a complete review during the building permit process.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Gianna?
Uh, I have two questions. I think the, I didn't hear anything about the school. Is that school being opened right now or is it closed?
Uh, it is, it is not open right now.
Okay, so it is an empty building there.
Yes, sir, they do some, um, recreational after-school programming, but it is not operating as a school.
Okay, uh, also, how will this, uh, building affect the borough, the Boys and Girls Club? I don't see it in any of your renderings, but I know that it's there. Um, what are you doing as far as? That one, I love that picture there. Okay, now what are you going to do as far as, uh, I guess, safety for those kids that are at the, uh, Boys and Girls Club? Uh, I see some shrubbery around in the back there, but it's, it's not going all the way around. So what's happening there? Would it be a fence, a wall, or what?
Yep, yes, sir, a great question. So there is currently an existing fence here that goes around the back perimeter. Actually, the entire site is fenced in. And so we're not moving that fence, that fence will remain. Um, our main, our connection point is right here. And so there's a walkway, existing walkway here that we're going to connect to. So if, um, our young people who live in our building want to go over to the Boys and Girls Club and participate in their activities, they have an easy connection point here where the Boys and Girls Club, um, youth want to come down and enjoy our civic open space. They have an easy way to do that right here at this connection. Uh, but from a safety standpoint, this, uh, existing fence will remain. Um, we're just doing a, some, a little bit of additional landscaping along it, but that fence will remain in place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I got a couple of questions. I wanted to just clarify, you said it was approximately a hundred and seventy-five units, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, but you said it was two hundred and eighteen parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
All right, it's, I mean, I'm looking at the schematics of it. And given that some of the apartments will be two and three-bedroom residential, right? So it'll be more than one car. So I'm looking at the numbers here. It seemed like it was deemed to be, it would need more parking, would, would you think?
So that's a great question. Uh, so a couple of things are happening. Uh, because it is an affordable housing development, uh, the code allows for one parking space per unit regardless of size, right? And so, uh, with a hundred and seventy-five spaces, at a minimum, we needed the one seventy-five for the apartments. We work with our, uh, with our traffic and parking engineering firm, Kimley Horn, to really do a look at the, uh, the use of the building, when people would be coming in and coming out. And what we've learned from doing a number of these developments is that very rarely is everyone there at the same time. Uh, people are working multiple shifts of jobs, first shift, second shift, third shift. Um, a lot of families that we're targeting as affordable housing, workforce housing, don't have multiple cars, right? They are often sharing one vehicle, um, at the most maybe two vehicles to get around. But again, people are working different shifts. And so we did a very deep dive into what the parking demand will be, uh, for the site and determined that the two hundred and eighteen spaces that we are providing meet that parking demand. Uh, and so we are, uh, confident that we have enough parking spaces to accommodate all of the folks who'll be using the building as well as the Alpha Community Center. Um, then we also added, so it was not included in our count because we can only count the parking spaces on our site, are the additional parking spaces that we're adding on West Park Drive. Um, and we expect those spaces to be used either for people coming to the commercial building, people visiting, or it just, anyone else. So there are an additional sixteen parking spaces here as well that are available, but we just can't count them in our two eighteen count because they're not adjacent to our property. And I think Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, also has something.
Also, Mr. Mr. Chairman, there are an additional thirteen parking spaces here that will be added along the north side of, of West 11th Street. Right now, I'm sure, as you probably have seen and walked in the site, there are not, there's nothing there, there's no parking here. And the parking that is here is, is in need of vast improvement. And so what, what they're going to provide is an additional thirteen spaces here, which is really is adjacent to the subject site. And then another sixteen spaces that are considered off-site. So in effect, the net effect is you got thirteen spaces here, another sixteen here, that's twenty-nine spaces added to the two eighteen. That'll be two hundred and forty-seven, that they will actually be providing access, uh, for this subject proj- proj- project.
All right, so, but one other concern I have also with it that he was actually correct, that everyone's not going to be at the same time and traffic is going to fluctuate. But let's just say that with the community center, correct? And let's say we have an event there or something like that and the parking that's there that will take up the parking for majority of the, um, uh, of the residents at the location. So the parking there, let's just say fifty people come to that event. So now we're fifty parking spaces down. Now where do the residents go at the park at that time? Like I said, I love the project, but I just want to make sure that we have some contingencies in place that are not going to go in and affect the neighborhood drastically.
They go next door. They're going to go next door.
Yeah.
To the chair, yep. So we took that into consideration as well. We know that there will be, um, events, activities, different things that are happening at this community center. And they may be happening at different times of day. Some may happen in the morning, some may happen later in the evening. Um, and so we took that into consideration when we looked at our parking calculations to make sure we had enough spaces to accommodate that. So we're confident that we can meet that demand for events that happen and things that are going on at the Alpha Community Center so that it doesn't adversely impact, uh, the rest of the parking situation. And again, that was a part of the intent behind adding these additional parking spaces on West Park and on West 11.
And one other question also, if that's the situation and, um, so the residents, are they going to have fixed parking spaces? That way, if someone comes to the community center, um, won't park inside the residence parking space. So would they have a fixed parking space for, for each unit?
No, sir, we're not assigning parking spaces. Yeah, we, we found from other developments that assigning parking spaces actually makes it harder for people to park. Because if I'm not there, then I have an open space that no one will park in, right? And so we've realized that having open parking spaces actually helps the parking situation out more than having an assigned space that's not necessarily used all the time.
And one other question also that's concerns, uh, myself being an educator. In the community center, I saw there was four or five different units that will be used for either, um, meeting areas or educational purposes. Now, would those be eligible for the community to be able to use at any time? Or would that be certain spaces that will be rented out?
Uh, it'll be both, right? So there'll be some spaces that are dedicated for nonprofits who want to have an office in the building. And that'll be their dedicated office space. But there are other spaces in the building that'll be able to be reserved. And that'll happen through the Alpha Educational Foundation. They'll manage the reservation process for community groups or organizations that want to use that additional space.
Mr. Chair, why something's on my mind? You said the Alpha Foundation will be running, um, I guess, the community center, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, the Alpha Educational Foundation will manage, will operate the community facility.
Who, who is the Alpha Foundation? I mean, who's?
Yep, so Alpha by Alpha Fraternity is the fraternity itself. And then they have a, um, a nonprofit that they run, that's the Alpha Educational Foundation, which is a part of the fraternity, but it's a separate foundation. And they run educational programs through that. They've been managing the current operation that's happening on the site. So it's a, a part of the bigger fraternity, but it runs their educational programs.
So the fraternity will be running the Alpha site, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, the Alpha by Alpha Fraternity.
Is there oversight for them? I mean, how, I mean, how are you going to do this? They're managing it, but do you have a manager over them that will manage the funds, I guess, that come in? How, how is that working? It's the Alpha site, now who's over them? Because someone has to manage the money. I'm not, I'm not trying to be technical, but you're saying the Alpha site, so are they in full control? How do you know what's coming in? How do you know what's going out? Is there a company that's going to be managing them or are they just going to be managing?
And so I want to, I want to speak on their behalf. I'm trying to see if there's someone from, Mr. Fields is not here. Uh, so the alphas will completely operate and be in full control of the community facility, right? They are in one hundred percent control of that building, um, as they've been managing their current operation that exists in the temporary buildings on the site right now. Um, and so they will manage how they reserve the space, what different groups and times that people are able to come in. And so the Alpha Educational Foundation, um, Mr. Al Fields is typically the person here to talk about it. Uh, so I don't want to give incorrect information, but they will operate the community facility completely. The same way that they currently, uh, operate their operation that's in those temporary buildings. They're moving that operation into the community facility, but now they have more space. And so they will then be able to manage the renting out or the, the availability of the other space for the groups who want to use it.
I mean, by whose authority? Who's, 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 who's the authority that's been given? Now, Mr. Booty, you can stand right there and answer if you want to. Mr. Booty, you can stand there and answer.
I, I can say, Mr. Mr. Shepherd, yep. So the, the bigger picture is that the Riviera Beach Housing Authority is the owner operator of the entire site, right? I think that may be getting to your question. So the housing authority and the partnership is there. And then the Alpha Educational Foundation, technically, yes, will report up to the housing authority. But because they've been operating the site, they, we're confident they know what they're doing. But if at any point, I guess, what your question may be, if there's a concern or an issue, the housing authority does have that oversight. Does that get to your question, Mr. Shepherd?
Um, no.
No.
No, it does not.
I have the same concerns as Mrs. Shepherd.
No, no, because there's some, you know, I, I know this is not the time, I know we're doing, um, but there's been some problems over there with mismanaging of money. So now you're telling me with this particular project, you're putting the, uh, the same company back into, uh, operation? you're putting the, the same company back into operation? I just need to know how to operate before this plan can be approved. I mean, I, 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 nothing wrong with the plan. I just want to know who's going to manage the hen house? Who's going to manage that money?
So I'm going to actually defer to our legal counsel, because I want to make sure I don't misspeak or anything. So Ms. Hope Calhoun.
Good evening, Hope Calhoun. I don't know that I can answer the question perfectly, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, this, I want to say setup, but that's not the right, that's not the right word. This arrangement that we're speaking of tonight is not a new arrangement. It is what's been going on on the property for a number of years. So what we're, as was already explained, we're just moving where it all happens. And any concerns you have about the, how the financing or the funding is handled, perhaps we can get with you offline or at another time, so that we don't hold up the folks that are here tonight with regard to the actual applications for the site plan, the land use plan amendment, and the text amendment, and the rezoning that are before the board tonight. I don't think anyone here, because you see they all stood up, prepared to answer your questions, but I don't think that we wanted to get into that this evening. Happy to answer them later.
Excuse me, can I finish? Okay, now, I, I know about the Alpha, this Alpha group. I understand completely, and I know we're not here to judge with them, but what I'm saying, that the city of Riviera Beach is getting in partnership with Riviera Beach Housing Authority. And we have been misjudged, or mistalked about that we, at planning and zoning, that we don't know. We don't know, but we do know because we asked the questions. I know this is a hard question, but the Alpha group has had some complications. Let me say it like that. And if you want to get technical, then the city of Riviera Beach, all the residents, they need to know and understand who is going to manage the Alphas. Their record is not a clean record, and I don't want to get into it. I really don't.
Ms. Shepherd, if I may, Jeffrey Jackson, Chair of the Housing Authority. That is a, it was a brilliant question to begin with, and, and I truly understand the concern. We all do. So as you know, Ms. Shepherd, we have long said that the Housing Authority is moving into the business of also having our own management company. All of our projects, we are going to be self-managing, and, and we'll work with the Alphas. As you know, currently, they, they are operating that site now. I know they are running a, managing a full program out of there. There are some other entities that are having meetings there at the site now. The N double A C P and a host of others. And my guess is that sort of thing will continue. I'm sure some of the other fraternities will utilize the site, and, and, and we'll be in partnership with them in having, in having that kind of oversight. Nobody's going to run amok, I can assure you, that's not going to happen.
I, I think you're still beating around the question.
Answer your question. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Terry Booty. When you saw the development team up there, there were three logos. The City of Riviera Beach Housing Authority, Urban Farmers, Inc., and O'Connor Capital Partners. We are the fiscal agents for this project, owning, operating, and management in perpetuity. Anyone that is going to be a part of this project reports up to the ownership. So if you're a tenant, a leasing, or you're a community member, all of that responsibility falls under that preview. The reason why that is so important is that there will be no mismanagement, no misallocation, nothing that will derail the revenue that is generated to pay back the mortgage that we're going to put on the property ultimately by our financing partners. So all of that clear delineation that you're talking about, which I understand, we are responsible for ultimately as the ownership. The reason why we are in partnership with the Alphas is specifically to continue all of the community goodwill that they have done. All of the nonprofit organizations that are, are there currently will still have an opportunity to be there and at a discounted rate. So this is essentially an enhancement of the broken down, busted trailers that are currently there. And now they're going to be able to receive a brand-new 15,000-square-foot community center, three levels with a full kitchen that'll be owned and operated by the entire group. So again, it is not to create any controversy, it is not to, to misappropriate funds, but ultimately to push this city in the new direction to ensure that you have workforce housing and ample community space for the new residents that are going to be here in the long run.
Mr. Booty, when I asked you to stand, I already knew you had the answer. It was a cut and dry answer that everybody's beating around the butt. Who's in charge? That's all I asked. You're taking the city of Riviera Beach, not for granted, I hope. The Judge Rogers, I think, is fabulous that you're going to do this in his name and help put the Alphas. I have no problem, but I think the public wants to know, because they're going to remember all this, who's in charge of the financing? And you pointed out, and I've heard you talk, so I knew immediately. You knew the site better than anybody sitting there, because I hear you put it out. That's all I want to do. I want to protect the city, I want to protect this board that let the people know that we asked the fine-tuned questions. And that was the question, who's going to handle the finances there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. While I'm at it, and I'm all kind of, the trash, tell me about the trash.
That is a great question, Ms. Shepherd. So in the apartment building, there are two trash rooms, one on the east side, one on the west side. On each level, on each residential floor, there's a trash room. I'll bring my trash bag out, take it to the trash room, drop it down the chute. It goes down to the trash room on the ground floor here and here. And there's also a trash room here in the community building. When it's trash day, staff will roll those containers out from those trash rooms. There is a enclosure here that is landscaped, and this is where the good company will send their trucks in, collect those trash bins, and then drive out. Staff will then roll those containers back to their designated location inside of the apartment buildings, then back inside of the community center. So very seamless, very clean process. We work with the good company, and they recommended the equipment that we're using. They told us what they like to use, what makes the most sense for them. And so we're using their, their recommended equipment. And so again, trash gets brought down the hallway, drop it into the room, down the chute. It goes into the compactor. Then on trash day, we roll it out to this enclosure. It gets picked up. Soon as it gets picked up, we take the bins back to the trash room.
Déjà vu all over again. How many days of pickup for this trash? Please don't tell me one.
There will be three trash pickup days.
Three?
Yes, ma'am. So trash will not sit on this site for long. We want it to be a very clean site.
So déjà vu all over again, here in the state. So the, the, the people go, put the trash into the compartment, and it goes down. And we all know that it's not a clean, the way you're talking about, this is a clean thing. I walk down there and I put it, not, not so. Is, is it going to be someone there to pick it up and clean up? Because now you've got three and four families in there. How often? Because if, 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 if this is the state of the art for Riviera Beach, I'd like to be the state of the art. So you say it's a management team, managed by?
There'll be onsite management that will report up to the development team. And so we will have onsite, onsite staff who will go around and make sure that these trash rooms are clean, that they're tidy, that there's nothing left on the ground. You know, every now and then, somebody may just open the door and throw their bag in. We don't want that, right? We want this to be a very clean development. And so we'll have staff who do that as a part of their job to roam around to make sure that there's no trash left in the trash room. And then in the bottom trash room, it goes into a closed compactor system. And so when it comes down that chute, it's not like the open thing that it falls into. It goes into a closed compactor. It gets compacted so there's no smell, so the room itself stays clean. And then when it's time for those three weekly trash pickups, we roll that bin out to where it gets picked up, then we roll it back in. So yes, ma'am, we will make sure that we have onsite staff making sure that it stays clean and tidy. That's for the entire site, right?
So it's, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's a compactor that you put the trash in, compact it in, is that what you're saying? Then it goes down the chute?
Nope, it goes down the chute first, and then it hits the compactor on the ground floor, and it compacts the trash into the, the bin that it's in. And it's a closed compactor. So if you were to walk into that room and see it, you would just see the closed end compactor. You wouldn't see any open trash, you wouldn't see a trash bag. You'd just see the closed compactor that's compacting that trash. That we then roll out, because it's a two-part piece. You roll that piece out, and that's what the company picks up and takes the trash away.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
The swimming pool, tell me about that, because it seems like a very large swimming pool. Is there going to be a lifeguard, is someone there? Or you're just allowing the families to police themselves? Because I think someone talked about the Boys and Girl Club, you know, with the kids kind of mosey on out. How, what type of protection are you going to give to that pool? Because I, I know at the here in the states, I think they have to have keys to get in there. But how, how is this going to work?
Yep, so rightfully so. You pointed out, it is a very nice-sized pool, it's very beautiful, with a lot of landscaping around it. But it's also enclosed and secured. So you can only get to the pool as a resident of the building. It's not open access. You can't just walk in off the street or just walk in from the Boys and Girls Club. So unless you live here, you don't have access to the pool. And it also meets all the safety requirements. It has to be gated and locked and has an enclosure to it. So it will be safe for the residents to get to. So it won't be open to just anyone walking to the pool area.
But it is, maybe I'll leave that alone. But if families there, it may bring a guest. How, how do you police that? Because it's a nice pool, and, you know, people will just be coming, or how do you police that? Are you just?
So as a resident of the building, you have the right to bring your guests to the building. And if you want to bring your guests down to the pool area, just like in any other apartment building, you have that right to bring your guests down, and you are responsible for your guests, right? So if I bring my sister or my friends down to the pool, I'm responsible for them. But yes, the residents and their guests will have access to the pool area.
So if there's a drowning or whatever, who's responsible for that with the non-guest? Let's go with a non-guest.
Well, God forbid there's a drowning. We definitely don't want that to happen. But again, the only people who have access to the pool are residents. So the only way you got to the pool is if a resident brought you to the pool. You can't just walk in the building and get to the pool area.
Okay, how many handicap parking spaces are we talking about?
There are nine handicap parking spaces. There are some in front of the community center. There are some right along this area, and then there are a couple underneath the building with the covered parking here.
Okay, local businesses. You said you're going to have 30 full-time jobs, is that it?
So between the staff that we will have working in our building, the management team that'll work there, the staff that'll work in the community center, and then the staff that'll be hired potentially by the retail space, we're estimating about 30 full-time jobs.
Okay, okay. So you will be, if I, if I'm listening right, the hiring people that live within the city? Is that, is that correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
How are you going to manage that?
So as you know, we've done, and Urban Farmers and the Housing Authority have very deep roots here in the city. And so we intend to do very, very intentional outreach to hire people who work here in the city. Not only are we doing that for the construction part of the building, because we want people who are Riviera Beach-based, who work and live in the city to be a part of the building of it, we also want them to be a part of the operation of it. And so we'll be doing job fairs onsite. We'll be reaching out, using our network of people to make sure that local Riviera Beach residents are not only living in the building, helping to build the building, but also working in the building as well.
Thank you. And Jariel Harris was one of the first planners I ever met when I came to planning and zoning. And that's been many, many years. And so I think you still have it. You explained it well as I was reading. The Marina, how, how, where did the name come from, Marina?
So it's a working title, I will be honest. And so because the Marina is just to our east, and there's so much activity happening right now, we're thinking, oh, as an annex is really like in a, an addition, or, you know, something added on to. And so we're not right at the Marina, but we're close to it, so we're kind of an annex off the Marina. We're still workshopping the name, so it could change in the future, but just to be honest.
Who made that name up, the group?
Yes, ma'am, the, the ownership team, the development team made it up for right now. But, you know, it may change in the future.
Annex. So as a group, you all made that name up?
Well, annex is a name that exists, but we just use the Marina annex as we're off the Marina a little bit.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I think that's, that's all for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I have a question. I wanted to kick it back off what you just stated, Mrs. Shepherd, about the workforce housing. Is that partial workforce housing or in its entirety workforce housing?
The entire 175 units.
Sounds pretty good. Can I, I know you probably can't answer this question now, because I guess it depends on the market at that time, but what discounts will the employees here will receive if they want to reside at your facilities? What, what, what would be the discount to encourage them to want to work there?
To the chair, we've not gotten to that point yet. I can't.
Okay, okay, okay. Mrs. Joseph, you had a couple of questions. I'm sorry we skipped over.
No, it's okay. My question had to do with the workforce housing. And this may be a question that the Housing Authority can answer. Are you guys managing, going to be overseeing the application process? Ensuring that the folks that actually live there meet those income qualifications?
Yes, ma'am. As I understand your question, you said the Housing Authority will provide full-service management from beginning to end. We will be responsible for lease-up and ongoing management activities.
Okay, and is that project also going to accept vouchers as well? Section eight vouchers?
Very, yes, ma'am. We will be accepting vouchers for the project.
Because you know, 140% AMI, that's like your incoming lawyer.
Right.
Maybe a teacher, police officer. So we want to make sure we have a nice mix in that building.
Not a teacher. Don't have that kind of money.
I would hope teachers aren't getting paid. And then my other questions were answered earlier. You know, obviously, my concern is parking. Are there going to be incorporating any sort of security measures? Gate eventual, I don't know, if like a resident-only gate? I know that's going to be a little hard, just because you have that community center there, but I think between this project and the five other projects that are coming down online, I think it's going to be really important that we have some sort of parking structure, measures in place, because I think it can be, it's going to get really crazy in that area, especially with the amount of traffic that's going to be coming in to those side streets. You know, this is probably more so city, that we need to incorporate some sort of traffic calming measures, because these neighborhoods have probably never seen that many cars coming through there in years. So there's going to be a lot of education, a lot of things that are going to need to be taken into place to basically do a more comprehensive look at the impact that these, the amount of cars that are going to start coming through these neighborhoods that they've never seen. And, you know, to the point that you made earlier, there's going to be a lot of traffic and a lot of wear and tear. So we're probably going to have to do improvements to the entire corridor with the amount of cars that are now going to be coming through that area. So just something to keep in mind. I know it doesn't just apply to you guys, but I'm talking just in general for all the projects that are going to be coming to the city. That's all, that concludes my comment.
Let me ask a question also, the two gentlemen here. Would you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves? So you know what part you play in this also? Yeah, you also, everybody.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. My name is Jimmy Messick. I'm a civil engineer for Calvin Giordano Associates, and put together preliminary engineering PG and D and utility plans. So if you have any questions about that, I'm here to help.
I'm Brett Buer with O'Connor Capital Partners. You know, we've been in business since 1983. We're active developers and owners of workforce housing on the East Coast. Very active here in the Florida market. I think we've put together a very exciting project here. We have, we manage over 12,000 apartments, very experienced in the management of property. I think you asked a lot of great questions tonight, you know, about ultimately how, how we're going to manage the population and, and manage basic things like parking and garbage and all of that. We do that every day. And, you know, we expect to manage this like a first-class, Class A apartment building. You know, it's workforce housing, but it's going to be managed like the best properties are managed. So we're excited to be here in your community, and we're excited about the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. My name is Terry Christopher Booty. I am the President of Urban Farmers, Inc. And just for context, I started my business here approximately 15 years ago. One of the things that we're most proud of as an accomplishment, we started the first ex-offender training program right here in the city. So when I was a corporate employee for Marriott, working on Singer Island. So when I was a corporate employee for Marriott, working on Singer Island, and we made a bunch of commitments and promises to folks that looked like me and you, I quit because we never did what we said we were going to do. Fast forward fifteen years later, I'm privileged to be a part of a team. Mr. Hurt, Chairman Jackson, Brett, all men of their word, people that are keeping their commitments. And so now we have the opportunity to put a beautiful project in your city but allow it to be an economic driver to employ folks that look like you and I. And that for me is the benefit of this project. And I'm so humble and privileged to stand before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh one other question um that I have, I guess is a statement because as I look out onto the floor and I see a bunch of distinguished gentlemen and young lady and is proud to see a project like this, to be able to come to our city, to be able to provide for our city and actually move us forward in the right direction. Um you spoke on the management and my concern is the same concern I think Mrs. Shepherd spoke of because we were involved in the community years ago. And I don't want to um like hash on it, but your management team seemed like you got everything in place. So in the situation of having this facility, then would it be possible for you to be able to run the community center also?
Yeah. So I hear, we're, we're really good listeners. So we understand everyone's concern regarding the fiduciary responsibility of having a nonprofit organization. One of the reasons why you have a general partnership is ultimately to provide that oversight. So I don't want you guys to be confused at all. The buck stops right here, is right here. So there will be no misappropriations. There will be no mismanagement. Everything has to be on the up and up because not only are we using federal funds, we're using county funds and private dollars. No one, no one wants to have any blemish on their records because the idea is to be able to duplicate this in the multiple cities and use this as a shining example of how you use the best of minority development to execute housing in critical communities that are experiencing gentrification. And if we screw this up, no one is going to allow us to do it again. So I'm telling you, unequivocally, there is going to be no issues as it relates to fiscal management. We got that one hundred percent under control.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just brought it up, Mr. Booty, um talking about another couple of complexes here in the city that had mismanagement of money. That's all I want to clear the air, that the Riviera Beach that really has no blemishes on their record, they've been on the up and up ever since I can remember. And I, 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 I want to keep their status. I don't want them to get into something and people start questioning things because you only hear one thing and then it's blown out of proportion. And I think the public needs to hear, who's going to manage it? And you gave us the synopsis of who's going to manage your project? Who's going to manage your money? That is, is, I, I think it's a very good project. I wouldn't step in the way, not at all. Uh because a lot of people, they don't really understand that we have a shortage of houses and apartments here in, in, especially Riviera Beach as we're building. And we are building, we are going places. But I don't want uh the blemish to be that they could have did a little bit better or what, you know? And I don't want the public to think that we don't ask the questions because these are all educated people up here. They know their business. I just fumble along, as you can see, a little bit. And I, I want, when people ask me questions, that I'm able to answer those questions. Another question is, um did you put door knockers on the? I, I see you have it here and some of mine, though I have a relative over there. But did you put door knockers on there? Because it's going to be very busy with all the projects that's going on. I don't know if they'll be going on at the same time. Um but did you put door knockers? Did you alert them? I, I reading, I'm assuming you have.
Yes, we have provided all of the required public notification. But beyond the requirements, we hosted a community event to be accountable to the community at large. And so we, we did it Pocluck style, family style, where we created an atmosphere where we closed the door and allowed everyone to ask all the tough questions. Again, understanding growth comes with its own challenges. And especially you're talking about growth that doesn't necessarily look the way that we thought it would be. We're at this period in time in history where it's inclusive. But this is this really pivotal moment where you have a person of color bringing a project of this size in magnitude that will help foster and boost the revenue to continue to generate housing opportunities for decades to come. So ultimately, we are accountable to the public. We are one hundred percent on board with executing this. You are not providing an approval, in theory, for a site plan for a project that will never get built. We are here to stay and we must be good stewards of the opportunity.
You're a good answer. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, he speaks well.
And, and Mr. Booty, Mr. Booty has a house in Inglewood, California, where my sister is at. So I always tell him we're family. So I'm so glad he's on this project and, and uh he's doing such an excellent job. And been around him quite a while, just listening to him talk. And um, and I grilled him pretty hard tonight, I think. And, and uh I think he's going to live up to his expectations. I'm very proud of the Housing Authority and so proud that they're taking on this project and give people that um leverage of good housing at affordable prices. And so I just hope that I could be around long enough to really see uh this project executed. And I think you're going to execute it well.
Amen.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the board? I'll finish off by saying again, um it's good to see a project like this coming in. As you can see, the board is pretty excited about it and everything. Um just a few minor concerns, but um I think the young man just cleared it up and he put his word on it and everything. And the story you told, pretty much less than know you staying on ethics. And I think that's one thing that the city of Riviera Beach, we want to um emphasize that and be able to stand on what we, what we say and do the right things um by our community. Uh so are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um if I may, just to clear up any prior confusion that there was as far as the, reading the titles and the agendas. And um I apologize for that. So item seven A, I believe, is the future land use amendment. Is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
Zero, 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 one?
LU twenty-five, zero, 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 one?
Well, I think the way that, the, the best way, ma'am, to answer your question, counselor, is that for the board, you're, you're looking, you're looking at one project, but there are four different aspects to the project.
And we got to do them separately.
Okay, the first aspect is the land use designation change from community facilities to downtown mixed use. The second aspect is the zoning change from community facilities to downtown core. The third aspect is the zoning tax amendment uh that will remove the building step-back requirement for developments west of Avenue E to provide for workforce housing. And then the fourth and final aspect is the approval of, the site plan approval, which consists of the hundred and seventy-five uh residential u- units, uh community center, and the um.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
Oh, oh, go ahead.
So I was thinking, Mr. Chair, to streamline. It might be easier to, for you to ask for a motion to approve the future land use amendment application, LU twenty-five, zero, 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 one. If there's a motion in a second, you can vote on that. And if, if, and then you can move on to each item individually.
Separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I agree with that. How about board, is that okay?
Yes.
And do it separately? Okay, let's start with that.
So is there a motion to approve LU twenty-five, zero, 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 one? Which is the future land use amendment?
So move.
Second.
Chair, it has been properly moved and second. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board member Brown?
Yes.
Board member Joseph?
Yes.
Board member Shepherd?
Yes.
Board member Gallin?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair, on the land use change.
Mr. Chair, the next application is the application to rezone the property, which is application number VA twenty-five, zero, 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 two. If it's the pleasure of the, the chair, you can call for a motion to approve application VA twenty-five dash zero, 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 two.
We have a motion? So move.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Chair, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
This is for the zoning change.
This is for the, for the uh, the uh rezoning amendment.
Rezoning, I'm sorry. This is for the rezoning, Chair.
Rezoning, right.
Board member Brown?
Yes.
Board member Gallin?
Yes.
Board member Joseph?
Yes.
Board member Shepherd?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
Mr. Chair, the next item is a zoning tax amendment to provide for um the change in the step-back. And that is application number VA twenty-five dash zero, 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 five.
We have a motion? So move.
Second. It has been properly moved and second, Chair, for the zoning tax amendment change. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board member Shepherd?
Yes.
Board member Joseph?
Yes.
Board member Brown?
Yes.
Board member Gallin?
Yes.
Board member Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
And Mr. Chair, the last item with respect to this project is the site plan approval. Um is there, you can, if it's your pleasure, you can call for a motion to approve um the site plan application number SP twenty-five dash zero, 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 eight.
Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt. And then this, that, that resolution is subject to approval with the, with the the twelve conditions of approval added to the site plan.
For the twelve condition?
Twelve conditions. That's on page uh thir-, that's on page uh thirteen and fourteen in your staff report. Thirteen, page, page thirteen and fourteen in the staff report.
You said twelve and thirteen? What did you say, twelve and thirteen?
I, I'm sorry, I said thirteen and fourteen of the staff. Yes, ma'am, page thirteen and fourteen of the staff report.
Well, can we read those um conditions into the report, please?
I'm sorry.
Can we read those conditions?
There are.
Twelve.
There are twelve of them. You want me to read them, each one of them? Okay. Number one, a two-year landscape performance bond for a hundred and ten percent of the value of landscaping irrigation shall be required before a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion is issued. Number two, construction and landscaping improvements must be initiated within eighteen months of the effective date of this resolution in accordance with section thirty-one dash sixty-B of the city code of ordinances, demolition, site preparation, and/or land clearing shall not be cons-, uh be considered construction. Building permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by the city staff in a partial and incomplete manner. Number three, city council authorizes city staff to approve future amendments to this site administratively so long, so as long as the site plan does not deviate greater than fifteen percent of the original approved site plan. Number four, this development must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all buildings approved within five years of the approval of the adopting resolution or the adopting resolution shall be considered null and void, requiring the applicant to resubmit application for site plan and special exception approval uh and re-initiate the site plan approval process. Five, all future advertising must state that the development is located in the city of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with city code section thirty-one dash five-five-four will be levied against the property owner and/or business for violation of this condition. Six, once approved, this resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property, causing previous site plan approval resolutions to be null and void. Seven, requiring the civic open space. The property owner and their successors for this site shall be permanently responsible for the operation, maintenance, and upkeep of the entire civic open space. Eight, plans for the public uh palm trans shelter must be included in the initial construction permit semi- packet. The developer must construct a city-approved mass transit shelter with appropriate access, lighting, trash receptacles, and bike, bicycle stores. The approved color for the bus shelter must be consistent with RAL color chart number uh five, zero, zero, five. The location of the shelter shall be within an approved bus stop boarding and a, a lighting area easement as dedicated by the plan. Any and all costs associated with the construction and perpetual maintenance, including emptying of the trash receptacles, shall be funded by the petitioner and/or future property owner. In addition to the above condition for the uh bus shelter, the applicant developer and the future property owners or HOA or their designated entity shall be responsible for the operation and maintenance of the life of the shelter. Uh defined maintenance expectations include trash removal frequency, graffiti abatement, lighting upkeep, surface and structural maintenance, including repainting and repairs as needed. Number nine, as a condition of approval in accordance with the city Riviera Beach Arts and Public Places Ordinance number forty-two, forty-five, codified in section thirty-two dash six of the city code of ordinances, the applicant shall participate in the city's art and public places program. Specifically, the applicant shall contribute an amount equal to one percent of the total vertical construction cost of the project toward public art. Participation may fulfill, may be fulfilled through one of the following three options, subject to review and approval by the city. I'm reading from page fourteen of the staff report. One, onsite art installation. Commission and install original artwork on a project in a location accessible and visible to the public. The artwork must meet all standards and criteria established by the ordinance and be reviewed and by the Art and Public Places Committee. Number two, under, under that, donation of artwork, donate eligible artwork to the city for installation on public property. The donated piece must be reviewed and approved by the Art and Public Places Committee and to ensure compliance with the ordinance requirements. Three, payment in lieu of, payment in lieu fee. Submit an in lieu monetary contribution equal to one percent of the total vertical cost constru-, construction cost to the city's Art and Public Place Fund. The contribution shall be calculated and verified by the building division prior to issuance. The fee is paid prior to permitted issuance. The applicant must submit documentation of their selected option and obtain all necessary approvals from the city prior to the issuance of a certi-, certificate of occupancy. Number ten, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the city's special utilities district. Number eleven, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit an updated solid waste plan and an updated letter of approval from the good company. In addition, the final location for all dumpsters shall be reviewed and approved prior to building permit issuance. Number twelve, the final location of all loading zones shall be resolved prior to building permit issuance. That is all, all twelve conditions.
Appreciate it, Mr. Thompson. I know it took a little time to read that in, but we want to have accountability to, to the board for what we're voting on.
And Mr. Chair, for clarity, is there a motion? Or you can call for a motion, I'm sorry, I'm, I can't call for a motion. You can call for a motion to approve site plan SP twenty-five, zero, 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 eight with the conditions read into record by staff.
Right, so move.
Chair, it has been properly moved and second. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Board member Gallin?
Yes.
Board member Joseph? Board member Joseph?
Yes.
Board member Shepherd? Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
Sure, ma'am.
Yes.
Just want to say thank you to, to you all for your hard work and dedication, and we really want to thank staff, and it was a heavy uplifting, and everybody got it done. And I want to thank you, Ms. Shepherd. You're our, you've been our biggest cheerleader, and you're partly why we're at this far. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Weathers, um, before they leave, they have property, the housing authority has different properties here in the city of Riv, can you look it up and give me the addresses of those properties, or is there address on those properties?
Thank you, you're welcome.
Kind of look that up for us. They have. They have.
You're welcome.
I can call you tomorrow. You're so welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may clarify that last request, you would like the address of?
Addresses, are there addresses on the properties that the Riviera Beach Housing Authority own? They were gifted some properties. I just need to know where they're at. Is there addresses, or how can I find them?
Okay, so a list of all of the properties donated to the housing authority from the city?
From the city.
Okay.
Okay, if, I just need the addresses so I can kind of, if there's addresses on it. I know, I know, I know. Okay. Okay, I'd like to know whether that. Thank you, you're so welcome. Congratulations. So welcome. So welcome.
All right, on to workshop items. Item eight.
No workshops at this time, but as mentioned earlier, we are planning one for October for the two items that were requested at the last planning and zoning board meeting.
Okay, on to number nine. Any public comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what was it that you said Renee Burgess asked for? It's on, it's not clear in my mind what was asked. I, I was really shocked about this. I couldn't quite remember what it, what it was that she asked for.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, a few meetings ago, uh, there was a development project that came in, and Ms. Burgess had some questions and concerns related to gentrification and, um, steps, measures that could be taken by the city to ensure or prevent as much as possible displacement of existing residents when big, uh, projects come in that increase property values. Uh, so she, uh, distributed some, um, recommendations and, uh, programs that other cities have, and staff is reviewing that and will present our findings to this board.
She wanted to know the property values will go up? Is that what you're saying?
That she wanted us to look into programs that would stop residents from being pushed out by rising property values.
Oh, okay, okay, I get you, I get you, I get you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Um, any public comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
All right, general discussion. Any staff updates?
None from staff, Mr. Chair.
Correspondents?
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this question is for staff. With all this, these new housing complexes coming up, are there any thing, is there anything in the budget as far as, uh, redoing the sewage and the paving of E Avenue alone that quarter? Is there anything in the budget?
The, uh, so the coming fiscal year, the budget has not been adopted yet. Next week's city council meeting, um, I believe the intent is to adopt and finalize the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, and within that, there are a list of the planned capital projects to be funded in the fiscal year. Um, I don't know, um, off the top of my head if Avenue E is included in that. Um, in previous conversations, I know, um, it was included in the solicitation for, um, a future public facilities. Uh, so off the top of my head, I do not know. I can look into those draft documents, but the budget has not been adopted yet. And the, and the budget is what would include what, uh, capital projects are to be funded for the coming year.
Okay, 'cause I have a concern with that. You know, we got all these nice buildings coming up in that area, uh, including City Hall, and E Avenue look a mess. That road, I don't know, I need to do something with that road fast, quick, and in a hurry.
I, I will inquire. Uh, again, I know at one point it was included in the solicitation for, uh, the future City Hall, for that to be a part of the improvements made, and I will, uh, make that inquiry and get back to you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other correspondents?
Mr. Chair, may I ask one more question while Mr. Tom, um, Sherman answer questions? Last week, I went over to on the Eleventh Street, and I saw off-site construction, and I never, um, seen it go before planning and zoning about picking the, um, developer. And I, I just was listening to channel eighteen yesterday, how he got that particular, um, job, I guess. Does that go with some of the things we do with planning and zoning? Do they have the opportunity? It doesn't go through RFP, or I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, and I like Ezra. I don't want nobody to say I don't like him. It's just the process that I heard. Even I questioned it last week, and, um, I just, I don't know. How does that work?
You said there was a property on Eleventh Street, and there was development going on?
Right there in front of, uh, I guess the CBC, it's Bill and those apartments, or condominiums, whatever they are, the Vella, yeah, the townhome.
Villa La On?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I kept listening to see if it was going to be RFP to pick a developer, but through a loophole, listening to them talk on channel eighteen, um, they didn't have to go through planning and zoning. They didn't have to go through RFP. Is that common practice, or?
Um, the Riviera Beach, uh, Community Redevelopment Agency is over that project. I'm not, uh, aware of what, um, procedures and procurement rules or laws they have, uh, but that would be a question for their organization. Uh, I'm not affiliated with the CRA. Um, of course, it, since they are developing within Riviera Beach, their site plan had to go through the city's, uh, review process. Um, however, I, I don't know what, uh, procurement rules they're subject to when they are, uh, developing a project. Um, I can ask someone from the CRA to reach out to you about your questions, if that is acceptable.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just curious, is that I think, um, with all these projects coming on board, that everybody should have a piece of the pie, and I think it should go through RFP where they have an opportunity to bid for that project. Just one person being hand-picked for all these different projects, I don't think it's fair. If we're going to be fair, we need to be fair with everybody. But it just seems like to me, and I don't want to start talking about it, because then people will say I'm kind of, uh, prejudiced, but, um, and, and I like Ezra, but, you know, everywhere I look, and I'm trying to figure out, how do he get the main projects? Does it go through RFP, or do the loophole they were saying procure them to give him these projects? And I'm just, I was just trying to figure it out. I, I guess I have to go back to channel eighteen to really look at it. But I was just asking, why did it not go through planning and zoning, or why did it not go through RFP, or do we just pick people that we like? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just standing.
Any other correspondents?
Um, just to piggyback off of what I shared earlier, you know, I really encourage the city to do a comprehensive transportation impact study, just to really see what's going to happen with all these projects that are coming. I know each project does their own little piece of it, but we need to look as a whole, like, okay, phase one, we have these five projects. In the next ten years, what is that going to look like? Because our current infrastructure, I don't think is going to be able to sustain the amount of traffic that's getting ready to come through these older season neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm. Did you see that picture they had up when they had the buildings listed from Broadway?
Exactly. Yeah, five hundred units going here, and then another.
Yeah.
What, eight townhouses, and then a hundred and seventy-five units, including folks that are coming to the community center. It's going to be absolute, we just, we just need to do a better job, be, you know, being proactive and addressing any, making any measures that we can make now to avoid the complaints and the calls that residents will make for the number of cars that are going to be coming through fast, 'cause they're trying to get home. Um, so that's just a general comment for, you know, staff, the city, as we grow, so.
Mr. Sherman, also, I want to ask you a question, just, just to, um, to go with what she was saying, 'cause, um, and I know this is not really popular here, but we, I know we spoke on it a couple of years ago. Um, because of everything that we have coming up here, and of course, the city is, is growing, especially with the new corridor, um, getting, um, going to start construction in the next couple of years, where do we stand at on, because of these areas growing like this, and being able to have some extra revenue to be able to help fix the roads up, um, landscaping, or whatever? I know that's not going to be popular. But the pan for the parking here in the Marina area, like they do in every other city, of their, the City Place area, um, Juno Beach, Jupiter, you name it, everyone has it to where you, you pay for parking, and that money goes back into the community to actually build it up to make it look better. And I've, and since we are here, sometimes we have to contribute to our community to make it look better. And that'd be something of another form of income, to be able to help offset some of the expenses to be able to get the city to where we're going. 'Cause like I said, the way we're growing, we're growing astronomically, and, and we're going to need money to be able to keep up with all these beautiful buildings. We got to have some nice roads. We got to have some upkeep. We got to have some landscaping. We're going to have to have some form of new income coming in that's going to be able to help finance some of this stuff. So any idea on that, or is that something that's off the table for now?
Yes, the city council did adopt a, and approve a parking program, um, within the last few months.
Okay.
And they have selected a vendor for it through a separate, um, solicitation RFQ, uh, process, and my understanding is that program will be live very soon. The proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-six does include the anticipated revenue from the parking program, and it is a, um, it is a big change in terms of having a, a form of revenue in that way. And this was a long-discussed, um, proposal of the city for quite some time, and, and it was recently approved, and implementation has begun, um, and it is expected to be fully operational in, uh, twenty-twenty-six, from my understanding. Although it's not under development services in terms of the operations, they are coming to us for some electric permits and whatnot, the vendor.
Right.
Um, but yes, the, I, I understand that the finance department and city administration are moving forward with that, and it is included in budget.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Correspond, any other correspondents?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But, Mr. Sherman, um, isn't that coming from, um, impact fees, or the monies that we're getting from these, um, apartments, condos being built? Don't they have to do any of the infrastructure, or I thought they say they would do some of the infrastructure or roads or something?
Sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah.
The developments are required to include or provide or update any infrastructure required for their specific project. Um, the majority of the time, that is the onsite infrastructure, but if there are situations where a road needs to be approved, improved offsite, or, um, other, um, civil stormwater, drinking water, wastewater, uh, the city does have the ability to, um, require them to make those improvements before they can get through the site review process. Uh, but the, the concurrency is the term used in the, um, development, uh, side. Uh, the concurrency is included in our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations, so that we have, uh, what's needed to require developers to pay their, um, share, uh, or build any infrastructure needed to support their projects. In addition to that, any project that comes through has to pay impact fees. Those impact fees for, um, utilities, roads, libraries, parks, um, there are a variety of different types of impact fees that they have to pay at the point of, um, paying their permit fee. They also pay those impact fees that goes into the, the city's accounts, so that we can make, uh, uh, future improvements down the road, uh, based on the impact of new development. So there, there are two ways that the city is able to ensure new developments pay for their fair share of their, of infrastructure use.
Yeah, because their big trucks and everything is coming and kind of tearing up our infrastructure, so they, they do, um, step in and try to repair, I guess, that part they're, um, they're part of, like the Obnica and all those places. Will they be working on those roads? I'm not sure.
You're asking about a specific project, or in general?
I'm just, I'm just talking about a project, not, because I, I, I see that they're going, um, the Obnica, I think is going to kind of rebuild Long Shore Drive. They're going to, uh, open the, um, the street, put sidewalks, you know, make it wider. So I think that was a part of what they wanted to do, or they, um.
We might have had something to do with them on the staff side.
Yes, yes, yes.
But yes, that's a, a perfect, a perfect example. The Ocalina project is making improvements on, um, Lake Shore Drive, and I believe Silver Beach as well, along the perimeter of their project. Um, and that is a part of the fact that their traffic study shows that a lot of their trips are going to be on those roads. Um, there was a turn lane that was needed on Silver Beach Road, uh, so they are making those improvements as a part of their project. But in addition to those offsite improvements, they are also paying impact fees that goes into the city's revenues, so that we can fund our future capital infrastructure plan for roadway projects. So, uh, that project in both ways is addressing infrastructure impacts of their development.
I think that'll work out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Up and coming planning and zoning board meeting is September twenty-fifth. Is that correct? 'Cause I thought I heard October.
Yes, there's a, there will be a planning board meeting on September twenty-fifth. We're preparing one, uh, case for you, and in fact, that will be the Villa La Ronze Phase Two project. And that's all I can say for now. Counselor nods her head.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. So move.
Second.